The Education Channel presents a discussion about early childhood education. Coming to you live from Naples, Imoculi and Everglades City. The first ever virtual town hall meeting.
So good evening and this is a historic night for Collier County Public Schools. And to start this historic evening, we have with us Naples High School's JROTC. So if you could join me in standing for the colors and also the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which Please remain standing while the color guard leaves the room. So thank you again for joining us. And tonight I'd like to introduce to you a couple of special people with us in the audience tonight, and that are our school board members. Joining us tonight is the vice chair, Ms. Kathy Curtalo. School Board Member Julie Sprague. And school board elect members Kelly Lichter. And Erica Donalds. So I'd also just like a minute to say thank you to our staff that has worked very diligently in trying to put together this very first ever virtual town hall meeting. So thank you to all of our staff that's worked diligently and I think it's going to work tonight. So thank you. Biggest thanks is to our audience, our participants. Thank you so much for coming out. We really appreciate it. And what do we mean when we say a virtual town hall meeting? So what we're going to do, for those of you in the board meeting room, if you can look to your left, you'll see a split screen over there because we have another audience at Imoculi at our ITech School and also down at Everglades City, they're down there on the other side of the split screen. And so we'll be fielding questions from all three areas tonight, including the fact that we are broadcasting live, as you heard, on our Education Channel. And we're also broadcasting live on the World Wide Web off our district webpage. So we have folks watching and joining from all over. And we also have folks following us on Twitter. And we'll be also taking questions from social media from our Twitter. So we're really trying hard to capture everybody in the county. We spent about six months researching this and it's never been done in this kind of a format, but it's also a little difficult to take such a distinguished panel all around. So we thought we'd try something new with our town halls this year and broadcast it all. And for those of you that may not be able to join us tonight and will re-watch this broadcast, we'll be housing it on our district webpage under Town Hall Meetings and also under our Parent Academy for the future. So having said all that, we do want to encourage this to be an active discussion. So you got cards from whichever of the three locations you're at physically tonight. So when you have a question, if you can hold up that card, we have staff members that'll come and retrieve that question. And for those of you that are in the audience, you can also tweet us a question in addition to a card. If you don't have a card, let us know and we'll be sure to get you a card to ask a question. So we also, for the parents and the community folks that actually attended, you received a bag tonight that was by grade level. In the bag are three books that we'd like to encourage you to use with your kids. In addition, you received a program that's actually a plethora of information. Everything from homework tips, what does pre-kindergarten programs look like, what are pre-kindergarten programs, what are kindergarten readiness skills, what are reading tips, and both math and reading at different grade level academics. So actually, this program is an actual parent resource. And for those of you watching this in the future and those of you watching us on either our webcast right now or on our Education Channel, all of the resources that we talk about tonight will be available online, including all the resources in our book. So stick with us on those. A few introductory comments from me and then we're going to jump over and meet our distinguished panelists and get right to different questions. So in our introductory comments, we would like you to know that when you look at our, well, up on the screen first was our hashtag. If you want to join us from Twitter, if we can go back for a second, it's at hashtag #CCPSTownhall. That's where you can submit your questions if you're listening to us from outside or if, again, you're in any one of our three environments, you can tweet us questions. That's our hashtag at #CCPSTownhall. So when you look at our PowerPoint, what you'll notice there is the first one talks about our student demographics. And this is a 10-year snapshot of who are the kids in Collier County Public Schools. So what you'll see is in a 10-year, we've had a decline of white students and increase of those students more turning into more Hispanic students for us as our blacks population has about remained the same. When you look onto the next screen, you will see our home language survey. So these are how many kids' home languages, English versus non-English. So what you'll see is that 49% of our kids come from non-English speaking homes. And for tonight on early childhood, if you looked at just our pre-K through grade three, that number goes to 56% of our kids come from non-English speaking homes. So that's an important statistic because we know that means many of our kids don't come with 20,000 vocabulary words that they need. And that's why, as we'll talk next through in the next screen, we're going to talk about our free and reduced lunch population that has escalated to 62% of our kids that come that are eligible for free and reduced lunch. So changing demographics. And when we talk about changing demographics on our next screen, what you'll see is in our strategic plan, we have a three-year strategic plan. We're in year two of year three in our strategic plan. We actually have six goals. And those six goals are earmarked on the screens above. And the number one goal is early childhood education. Why? When you hear that statistic of 56% of our kids coming from non-English speaking homes, we need to disproportionately reach out to our community and all the different groups that work with early childhood kids and work together as a community to work on early childhood. So from our goal one, let's get right to meeting, who is this incredible group of people that's in front of you that are many of them representative of our community? So let's first meet, starting to the left, Susan Block, who is the CEO of Early Learning Coalition. Next to her, Alan Horton, who is the community nonprofit leader. Nicole Howard, who's the executive director for Collier Child Care Resources. Next is Mary Jordan, I'm sorry, Mary George, who is the vice president of the Community Foundation. Next is Linda Salazar, a principal from Eden Park Elementary. And Jennifer Kincaid, also from the school system, the executive director of our elementary programs. So a very distinguished panel. And again, I want to reiterate, the reason we have a panel from community is that early childhood is not just a Collier County Public Schools area that we need to focus on. All of these folks that work with early childhood programs, they become Collier County students. So the more we can work together on this, the more we can have kids ready for kindergarten. So with that, we're going to jump right into our first question that came from, and just so you know, we also had questions that people could submit prior to tonight on our district website. So the first question comes from our district website, and that is, why is early learning so important? So before I let Alan Horton and let him take a stab at this question, to let you know, what we're trying to do is answer universal questions. So the universal question would be a question like this. If you have a very specific question, we'll be sure that staff members get back to you. But we do ask that on the cards, when you submit, make sure you let us know contact information, your name, either email, a phone number, or a way that we can contact you. So if we don't get to your question tonight, we can have a staff member follow up with you. So we're looking for those universal questions, but if you have a specific question, still let us know. So again, this first question, why is early learning so important? And we're going to let Alan Horton weigh in on this.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. I think we all know that nationwide, we have an unacceptable dropout rate. High school isn't completed by too many of our young people. We have achievement gaps with the minorities lagging. We have youth unemployment at unacceptable rates. And believe it or not, we have quite a large percentage of young children, four-year-olds and five-year-olds, who are not ready for kindergarten. In this county, we think it's about 20%. I think some of the statistics would indicate it's about 33%. So from one out of five to one out of three kids starts school not ready. We also know that early learning is crucial to brain development. Some of the most important brain development happens in the first five years of life. Now, so that's some of the background. Let me give you some specific facts. As I said, at least one in five in Collier County, five-year-olds, when they start kindergarten, isn't ready. And why does that matter? Every child who starts not ready steals teacher time from the ready. So every child is affected. And the second reason is, we have an absolute promise that we make to our next generation that we won't let any children fall through the cracks. And our economy and our political system depends on good citizens, good providers, and we need to make sure we don't lose anybody along the way. Now, from an economic point of view, from a businessman's point of view, or a businesswoman's point of view, excuse me, it's important to look at the return on investment we get along the way. And every dollar spent on early learning, if it's spent on the right kinds of programs, every dollar spent saves us at least $17 over the following 20 years. And why is that? Because when children are not ready for school, they're at high risk for not succeeding in life going on. And that increases gang participation, dropout rates, and so on and so forth. The fact is, it costs 20 times as much to incarcerate a juvenile for one year as the state spends for voluntary pre-kindergarten per pupil. So if you spend that $2,500 on the pupil at age four, that might prevent the big figure 20 times that for incarceration later on. Now, the more important point is the workforce. In Florida, we have a governor whose main job is to recruit jobs. We need to have workforce development to have those jobs. That means children have to complete school ready for jobs and/or college. And that's the goal. So Governor Scott gets it. The private sector gets it. Early Learning Alliance created in Orlando out of the Florida Chamber of Commerce, aligning with the Florida Tax Watch and the Council of 100, says that nothing is more important in the state right now than early learning. And by the way, Dr. Patton gets it. She's actually setting the trend statewide for school districts beyond their mandate. The state mandates schools to start at age five and kindergarten on. She says, that's not good enough. If we don't get the right kids with the right preparation at age five, it makes our job much, much tougher. So we have elementary schools that actually have pre-K in many of the elementary schools. We have curriculum help to the 80-plus providers of voluntary pre-kindergarten in the county. And we also have school readiness in some of the schools, which is subsidized childcare. So the combination of all these things indicates that we're on the right track.
Great. So let's take our first question live tonight. And let's go out to Imoculi with Dr. Torres, our facilitator out there. Do you have any questions from Imoculi?
Yes, we do have one question. Before ITech was built in Imoculi, there was a center for pre-K aged children called the Learning Center. My question is, are there any plans for a new center or school to be built just for pre-K aged children? I feel this time is very important to have that.
Okay, so how about Jennifer Kincaid from the district?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. The center that Dr. Torres is referencing was referred to as the Learning Center in Imoculi, and it did serve students age four at one time. The Learning Center doesn't exist as a standalone facility for pre-K students, but we do serve Imoculi students through VPK and Head Start programs in all five of our elementary schools. We currently have at Village Oaks Elementary, three programs. At Highlands, two classrooms. At Eden Park, two. And at Lake Trafford, we have two classrooms as well. We actually were able to serve 162 students in Imoculi in nine classrooms. The Head Start and the VPK staff also work with the Early Learning Coalition staff to provide access to community providers if there is ever not space in one of our programs. Currently, we do have open spaces in Imoculi, one at Highlands and three at Lake Trafford, and very minimal wait lists at other places. So at this time, we feel that the programs that we're providing in Imoculi are sufficient for the requests and needs that we've heard from the community. So at this point, we have not opened new classrooms, though we are always willing to do so.
And to just add one further comment on that. One of the things we'd like to do is to keep the pre-Ks with their siblings so that parents can be involved in one school because it's a challenge to get parents involved and to not spread them out. So where we can put them right in our schools, it helps facilitate that family. Okay, how about we jump to the other end of the county, over in Everglades. Everglades with Debbie Terry, any questions from Everglades?
Good evening, everyone. Yes, we have one, Dr. Patton. And it's, my daughter's birthday is September 14th, which is two weeks past the cutoff for entering kindergarten. She will be almost six when she starts kindergarten unless I can get her in a year early. Is there a way to do this? Can she take a kindergarten readiness test?
Thanks from Everglades. And Jen, I hate to come back to you, but how about you explain that answer?
Okay, my pleasure. We actually have a Florida statute in the state of Florida that governs the age at which students can join a public school kindergarten. The date for that is September 1st of that school year. They must be five by September 1st to be able to enter a public kindergarten. For those of you that might be interested, that's Florida Statute 1003.21, and I didn't know that off the top of my head, so I don't want to portray that at all. This was a question we got on the website, but we often do get this question as parents are eager to have their high-performing preschool students enter kindergarten. You'll hear from some of our panelists tonight, opportunities for your students to continue to shine and to continue to build on the academic progress they've made through quality pre-K programming.
Okay, so let's go to a question from right here this evening that someone submitted, and that question says, what kind of STEM applications could I introduce to my pre-K student? Want to take a stab at that one? STEM activity.
Okay, I'll try.
All right. So Nicole.
STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. So all of those things are very interesting to young children, especially science. Go with their interests and try to infuse those type of activities, science and math, around their interests. That's the biggest thing, I think, with young children, to get them to really learn.
Okay. How about Susan, you have a thought on that?
I would add to that just a little bit. When your children are asking questions, sometimes you might want to ask them questions back in return. Why do you think? Sometimes you have an opportunity to experiment. Children come into this world, they're already experimenting. They don't need to be taught science, they need to be encouraged in science. So if you have an opportunity, there was water on the ground after the rain, and a couple hours later, the water is gone. What happened? We're talking about the concept of evaporation. And if your child's interested in it, then it becomes a fascinating place to start.
Okay. Mary?
And just one other thing to add. I think there's plenty of nonprofit resources in the community that offered STEM programs, especially during the summer. There's a lot of summer activities, after-school programs, so keep your eyes open for those as those resources come up.
Absolutely. Great. Okay, just want to remind the audience that you have cards, just make sure we have your name and contact information in case we don't get to you. And to our other audience, hashtag #CCPSTownhall for other questions. Okay, so let's then turn back to a question that came to us previously on the web, which was, what is kindergarten readiness and how is it assessed? And since we have a principal up here, how about we let Linda Salazar take that one?
My pleasure. Good evening. Kindergarten readiness is exactly what the name implies, and depending on who you ask as well. For the state of Florida, kindergarten readiness is students who are ready for kindergarten. They've, a set of criteria has been established by the Office of Early Learning in the form of an assessment that's called the Florida, we call it Flicers, Florida Kindergarten Readiness Screener. It measures a variety of things about what the students know. Do they know letters, the letter name? Do they attach sounds to letters? Are they able to comprehend something that is read to them when questions are asked? Are they able to demonstrate their comprehension? So it's pretty much measuring what they know. If you ask a teacher, a kindergarten teacher, what it is, they're going to give you some things on top of those. They will say that they can listen to stories without interruption, that they can sit at a circle with other students, get along, and be able to listen to a story without interruption, that they're able to cut, hold a pencil, show some understanding of time, not necessarily look at a clock and tell time, but to be able to say, okay, we've had breakfast, now we're going to do this. This is the way that the day progresses. That they're able to communicate their needs, maybe sentences of five to six words, those type of social things that are important for students. Just a readiness to learn, is, I think, is how a teacher would explain that.
Anybody else want to answer that?
Thanks, Susan. Aside from all the academic skills, and I call them pre-academic school skills because what you really want is, again, to ignite that excitement about learning. So when a child comes to school and they forget their lunchbox on the first day, do they know how to kind of think and say, well, who can help me here? Will they go to their teacher to get help, or will they dissolve into tears and be just a hot mess because they can't figure out how they're going to feed themselves? Social, emotional skills are every bit as important, and maybe even more important if I had to favor one over the other, because the academic skills can be gotten, but if we don't take the time when children are young to teach them how to get along, those are skills that we later don't recoup. And when Alan refers to resources later on, that's where we're spending money, fixing that problem later on down the road.
Absolutely.
I'd like to add something, please. Susan's right about the social and emotional development. And I've also heard that children kind of level out by third grade. And on top of the social and emotional development, it's really important in young children to foster and inspire young children for learning and get them engaged where they're having fun and they are building their confidence levels because we all can find answers anywhere, right? We want children that are resilient, that are interested in learning, and if they get a strong foundation in that in the early years, then that will really take them a lot further.
Great. And Linda?
I think that goes back to the question that Mr. Horton answered previously about why was this important? And so much of what you've all, all the panelists have discussed are things that happen at home. And really what they're talking about is confidence, having confidence in their ability to communicate, knowing who to go to, confidence in their abilities. And really, that's something that parents nurture at home through conversations instead of giving, we tend to, when we're working, I used to be a working mom, when we get home, we tend to give a lot of directions. Put your backpack away, get ready for dinner, did you do your homework, those kinds of things. But engaging students in authentic conversations with a good use of vocabulary, laughing when they tell you a joke, getting down close to their level when they're talking to you gives them a sense of importance. What I'm saying is important because my mom and dad are looking right at me. They carry that to school with them. So I think those type of things are so important and are reflected in their behaviors at school.
Great. Alan?
I just want to reemphasize something that I hinted at in my first answer to the question, and that is, if statewide, and these are the statistics, if one out of three kids is not ready for school when they get to kindergarten, that translates into 40% of the kids, and this is a fact in the state, 40% of the kids not reading at grade level by the third grade. So it actually is a multiplier because if children are disruptive and not ready, then that affects the other kids around them in the VPK programs and also the kindergarten. So it's a very, very tough thing. And I want to make another point that I think applies here. We now have statewide and have had for nine years, the four-year-old training called voluntary pre-kindergarten, paid for by the state. And as I said, a lot of children are not enrolled in that for reasons that are many and are too long-winded to talk about tonight. But the bottom line out of all of this is that if we can't find a way to address at all levels, age four up, if we can't find a way to address each child as an individual and figure out what that child's needs are, then we're going to miss some kids and they're going to fall through the cracks. And so we have this VPK program, we have kindergarten. The question is, then does all that information that was learned at each of those stages about that child, is that information somehow going to go with that child on so that the teachers in the first grade and the second grade, whatever, can deal with them? And I understand there are lots of questions about that, and people are worried about database mining and all that. But at the end of the day, if we can't address the real needs of each individual child, then we're going to have problems.
Okay. And let's jump back out to Imoculi with Dr. Torres. A question out from Imoculi.
Yes, Dr. Patton, we have one more. Why is it that kindergarten students have to learn so many sight words within a year's time in school? And what if they don't meet the requirements of knowing all 100 sight words? Will that put a damper on their learning, or can they go to the next level?
Okay. How about our principal, Linda Salazar?
100 is a lot of Dolch words, and there are only 220 when you put them all together. But as a kindergarten student, it's not expected to learn 100 Dolch words in one year's time. The amount is actually broken up into a small amount. I think this first grading period, we asked for 10 that they had to know. But the words, the importance of the words is that those sight words are not, they show up, they're called high-frequency words for a reason. They show up all the time in the environment, all the books. If students take time to try to sound them out, they usually lose comprehension, their understanding of what they're reading because their time and focus is taken up on decoding the word. So if the students develop what we call automaticity, something that they, a word that they know automatically when they see it, then the better readers they're able to become and the more fluent they're able to be.
Let's take another question from right here in our room. So someone asked us, what are activities I could do with my kids in the car or at the grocery store? Because these are two places that I have my kids with me so often. All right, so we have Susan right on that one.
I have a confession. My kids have been out of the house for a very long time, but sometimes I still sing songs from the Tupperware tunes that used to be on a cassette. Seriously, we used to do a lot of singing in my car when my kids were little, and that helped to pass the time. And being in the car, lots of us are in the car a lot of the time, it's a wonderful time to have some real conversation. And it's, for me, it was a good time to do some listening because I should be really focusing on the driving. So when my child was talking, I certainly wasn't looking at him or her, but I was listening and we were talking. And the grocery store is a great place for taking the written word, à la coupons, and saying, can you find that box of Cheerios? What's the first letter in the box in that word? And at any stage, even if a child isn't reading, they can start to match the colors and the shapes. And you can have them looking at low places where you may not want to look. And you can engage them in that way. It can really be fun. I know grocery shopping can also not be a lot of fun, but you can make it a lot of fun.
Any other panels?
One of the most important things to always remember is that parents are children's first teachers. And we value parents' contribution to their students' language, to their students' learning before they come to our door. So even if you do not speak to your children in English, that language that you use is still so very valuable. We encourage parents from all language and heritage backgrounds to continue to tell their family stories, to share experiences they had when they were young. And as Susan mentioned, the grocery store is And as Susan mentioned, the grocery store is a great place to talk about colors, to talk about shapes, to talk about sizes. Is this box, this bigger box, as your kids get older, a better deal? Because most of the grocery stores now have a per-unit price on the price tag, so you can keep students engaged, keep your children engaged. And as a working mom myself, I know that keeping them engaged can make your grocery shopping a lot cheaper than if they're allowed to just continue to choose things that you might not have chosen. Thank you.
Absolutely. So let's go back to one of the questions that was submitted before our town hall meeting on our district website. And what is the role of a parent in your child's learning? The role of the parent in a child's learning? Mary, what are your thoughts about that?
Thank you, Dr. Patton. I am not an early child expert, but I am an expert in community resources. And one of the things that I've learned over the last 20 years of making grants to nonprofits is that parenting is a must. We fund a lot of programs for parents, a lot of resources for parents. Learning begins the day you bring your child home. We support hospital programs that are offering parent and parent resources as they leave the hospital. During the first three years, your child's brain grows exponentially at an astonishing rate. And by three, they have, the brain is 80% of its adult size. That's pretty amazing. Communication, and I think you mentioned, talking, 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 reading, 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 talking, and talking, and talking. I think those are important keys, as well as just really looking at high-quality early education programs out there. And as a parent, and being able to tap into what they know and what those preschool teachers can tell you as well.
Okay. All right, so let's jump down to Everglades and for one more question from Everglades.
Good afternoon, good evening, Dr. Patton. And one parent has written, I don't speak English, but want to help my child in school. How do I do that?
And just to piggyback on that, another audience member here asks, what if I don't speak English, I speak Spanish, should I still read to my child in Spanish? So there are really two questions about the same topic. Who'd like to try that? All right, Linda?
I grew up with a mom who didn't speak English, but her contribution to my education was developing the foundation skills in Spanish, singing songs, telling me stories about where she grew up. We wrote stories together. We read the Bible in Spanish together. I'd read a chapter, she'd read a chapter. That was my early introduction to reading, written Spanish. I had a high vocabulary in Spanish. And so even before I began school, we moved into a neighborhood where everybody else spoke English. What I remember now as being that youngster, all of those skills that I had learned in Spanish so easily transferred over into English. So my recommendation to parents is this, continue to have those conversations in Spanish, read in Spanish. If you've got an intermediate student, let them read a page, you read a page. It develops their Spanish language as well. When you're speaking to your child, do not let your child get off the hook by saying that thing, "Aquella cosa." Make them use the word, because as they develop habits, whatever habit you stress at home, we will stress at school. We see the effects of things happening at home, at school, so clearly. So whatever you do in terms of, you know, talking to her after you see a movie, or him after you see a movie, writing letters to each other, small notes that you put on the refrigerator, different kinds of literacy activities, but be encouraged, because whatever you do in another language will transfer over to English. Thank you.
Okay. Jen?
Just to continue Linda's train of thought, research says that children really learn concepts one time. So you learn how to tell time one time, and you learn how to count money one time, and then after that, everything is transferred to another language or to another setting. And so you might know that if you go to another country and you look at the exchange rate for our money, you'll get a coin and say, oh, that's like a penny, or that's like a nickel. So when we teach children concepts in one language, then they can transfer that concept to English, and it makes them so much richer in their understanding of concepts than if they had only learned that language, or learned that concept in one language. So you really are helping your student develop their brain and develop their learning by continuing to talk to them about real things that will matter in their adult life. Thank you.
Great. Nicole?
And the worst thing to do is to mix the two languages and not develop a strong foundation like Linda's mentioned. A lot of parents are worried that their children are going to be behind when they start school, if they don't have a good command of the English language. But like she mentioned, they will learn it if they have a strong foundation in a language, and it's preferable their home language that they develop. And they're amazing, the brain is amazing to be able to grasp another language if they're given that strong foundation. So the worst thing you could do is, in the same sentence, mix between the two languages and go back and forth.
Great. Alan?
We've forgotten to mention a key word, love. If students feel loved at any age, if children feel loved, they have more confidence. And if parents are loved and love in return, they can also convince students to give strangers and different languages a chance. There's something about having a parent say that it's all right, and you don't have to be afraid of it, and it might take some time, but you're going to love it and you're going to get used to it. I think all of that works to the advantage of the child.
Absolutely. So Mrs. Salazar, you mentioned the word writing. We had a question from a parent here that asked, what if my second grader is writing, but their spelling is all wrong? Should I keep correcting the spelling? I'm afraid they may stop writing. All right.
What grade level?
Second.
Second grade. I think that at second grade, it's more important to be concerned about what they write than how they write. You might mention, I would point it out in a gentle manner. I would not take the tone of an old teacher saying, you know? You don't want to do that. You want to just be a very gentle teacher, parent, and point out that, oh, I think you've made a little mistake here. But if the student can read it back to you and read it fluently, what they've written, then I would be more involved in what the writing says than how it's written.
Great advice, great advice. So we have another question here, and this is a pretty generic question, but what are ways to help make learning fun at home? That opens Pandora's Box for everybody. Making learning fun at home. Susan, you have a smile down there.
Anything could be made fun, anything. It's all about your attitude. So if your children see you reading and enjoying yourself, and you give the message, not just telling them to read, but that you're a reader and that you enjoy reading it, or maybe you read literally a book of jokes together that makes you both laugh aloud, learning can be really fun in that way. Sometimes it's for us adults to slow down enough, and for young children just to really be in the moment with them. Sometimes your exchanges from them, how can you not smile at a child who you're really engaged with? To me, that's fun.
All right. Nicole? Oh, I'm sorry.
Susan said about everything, I would say, but, you know, engagement's very important, quality time, and I hear these words, but being in the moment, so often we're so busy as parents, as teachers even, we're thinking about the next thing before we can even enjoy what we're currently in. And children can pick up on our body language much more than we realize. And if we're not present and trying to create genuine encounters with children, they're going to know, they're going to pick up. So if you want to have fun, you need to, you have to have fun from within first, and a child will follow. Be genuine about it, though, and be in the moment, and turn off the phones and everything else that's going on.
And Mary, what were you going to say?
I just wanted to reiterate that there are many community resources out there. So if you're looking for some things to do with your child, don't forget arts and crafts, don't forget those kinds of projects. It depends on what you're good at as well, and how you feel and how you interact with your child. So there's so many ways to transfer language and so many ways to learn, but, you know, how to learn to use the scissors in the right way, or how, you know, what kinds of glue. There are a number of resources out there. There's a number of, especially museums and after-school programs that will offer sort of kits for parents and ideas, so take advantage of that.
Okay, and let's go around our county again, and let's head out to Amokali virtually with them.
Yes, Dr. Patton, we have one more question. Why is it that to qualify for early childhood education, it is based on income? From what I understand, children to qualify for pre-K, this is all based on family income. Can you explain?
Hey, Susan?
I think there's a little bit of confusion about the kind of programming that's available. Voluntary pre-kindergarten is available to all of Florida's four-year-olds, paid for by the state of Florida without regard to income. You prove the age of the child, that the child's going to be four by the first of September, and you bring proof of your residency, and you are matched to a school, whether it's at the school district or one of the many private providers here in Collier, and your child can go to VPK. And that's here in Collier, and that's in every county in the state. The program that is income-based, and it's a little confusing because the state calls it a school readiness program, that's childcare subsidy, and that comes from federal money that's to help the working poor have childcare. So of course, it is based on income, and in order for a family to qualify, they would need to come in at 150% of the federal poverty level or below. And that's for children ages, you know, babies, in some instances, up to sixth grade.
Susan, isn't it also true that one of the parents has to be working too for that program, to qualify for that program, right?
Working or going to school, or maybe both.
Working or going to school, okay.
And there is a Head Start program that has different criteria, where I believe some parents don't have to work, but it is income-based.
So before we jump out to Everglades, another question from our audience tonight. Are there any good TV shows anymore? And are there any good apps that you might recommend? Or if not the name of app, what kind of things should they be looking for in the app for early childhood? Shows our generation of kids asking about apps.
And I'll start here, and the gray hairs, you know, they don't lie. I come from a different generation, and yet I get really excited about the technology as well. So my general caution would be to first place emphasis on interactions and real human beingness. There's plenty of time and space for screen time. Children need to build and have actual experiences with live human beings and things that they can interact with. This motion gets them only so far. And I mean, it's very limited. And there's actually some research that says too much screen time can do harm to your child. So I have no recommendations for good television or a good app.
Okay. Any other panels? Alan?
This is a hunch, not science as far as I know, but it seems to me that children get a lot from playing with other children. And I think sometimes when we think that Sesame Street and Mr. Rogers and today's versions of those programs can do all that socializing for them, and it's fine sometimes, but actually, good quality play with other children is hugely important to young kids.
Okay. Nicole?
In our early learning programs, we do allow screen time. You never would watch TV or anything like that, but we have smart boards and computers, but we allow them no more than 20 minutes a day. So we do time that. And as far as programs and applications, you know, you really want to go to the educational kind. The school district has some games, but they're educational games that the children can play right from the school district website. Anything from the PBS channel usually is educational-based. But again, you know, play's important, and they do get enough screen time. But there are times as parents where screen time can come into play with tablets and things like that. But try to make sure they're educational, and that you do follow, as they get older, the rating system.
Okay. And so let's head out to Everglades. Everglades, I hear you have a question.
Yes, we do. This one is, does the school district do anything to give local pediatricians information about the service that Childfind provides to identify children who may be suspected of learning or speech and language concerns early on?
How about Jennifer?
Okay. Good evening, Everglades. That is a big responsibility that our Florida Diagnostic and Learning Resources System fills, and they're also known as Fiddler's. Childfind is part of their responsibility, and that is communicated to childcare providers through the Early Learning Coalition, pediatricians, and others who serve young children and their families. Fiddler's provides the opportunity for parents to have a Childfind specialist meet with their student and assess their needs for additional support for learning. So Fiddler's is a great resource to know about, and we'll be posting their phone number on our website. So if parents have a concern, they can call Fiddler's directly, or they could work through their pediatrician or other childcare provider to get access to that service.
Okay. And Nicole?
And if you have a child that's birthed to age three, then you would go through early steps. And once they're three and older, we go through Fiddler's.
Okay. So one more question back early on sent in. What can I do to help my children become a good reader and writer? How about Nicole? You look like you're leaning forward.
Well, we've touched about this a little bit, but first and foremost, show an interest in reading and writing yourself. Notice print in your environment, magazines, grocery stores, programs, newspapers. Ask questions, listen to their questions. Sometimes, by the way, their answers take a long time. Wait, wait for that answer. A lot of us are quick to fill in the answer and finish a sentence for a child. Let them think, let them think it through, and wait for that answer. Try to read to your child 30 minutes a day. Now, we've heard that many times, but it's very important to be a model of reading. As far as writing goes, make sure there's a lot of writing materials nearby. Make it very convenient, have little caddies with notepads and interesting materials, interesting colored pencils, crayons, not just a pencil. Chat about letters in the alphabet when you're reading stories. Have them notice the letters in their name. Connect books to things that happen in everyday life, so go back on those stories that you've read before. Let your child pretend to read parts of books, and that's important, too, when they are learning pre-reading and pre-writing. In the beginning, especially writing, it's not going to look like anything recognizable. That's all a part of writing, the sticks in all different ways. And value that work. Display it on the refrigerator. It doesn't have to look pretty. It's their work. And the more you show an interest in their learning and reading and writing, the more that they're going to follow suit later on.
Great. Linda?
For the younger children, I know that the state of Florida put out some research a few years ago that said that the probability of them having reading success depended heavily on the student knowing, being able to know their alphabet and have symphonic awareness, which was to be able to determine sounds and letters and put those together and understand the concept behind it. Now, having said that, the only way that students are able to do that is if people at home are working with them, singing the ABCs, looking at environmental print, pointing out what is the beginning of that word, looking at the initial sounds and the letters that go with it in words that are around in the environment. And I know that we keep saying this, but talking a lot helps because that's really the precursor to reading and writing. But when you talk a lot to your child, it develops that vocabulary, and they carry that vocabulary over to reading. When you read a lot, it makes it so much easier when you have discussions later, because if a child can tell you what they're thinking, if they can tell you a story that they've made up, then they are now ready to put those same thoughts down on paper.
Great. So when we had that question about what kind of activities can we do that are fun around the house, don't forget about the kitchen, another- Don't forget about the kitchen, another place that you always have your kids. So let them estimate, "How many cans are in this cupboard? How many cans do you think are in two cupboards?" Bring out the cans, let them count those cans, let them touch the cans as they count. Make sure then, as they get a little older in second and third grades, ask them to estimate, "How many ounces do you think are in the cans?" Put three cans next to them and let them add up how many ounces are in each of those three cans. Think of those activities. Another great, easy one is that we know that you're involved, parents, that's why you're here. So when you read that story, at the end of the story, ask them, "What if we had a different ending? What could the ending be? What if that character had done something differently?" Let them think of a different ending at that. So as we count down to our last couple of questions, a question sent in earlier, "Why is oral language development so important in early childhood, and how can you help as a parent?" Susan, with your little smile.
Linda just made reference to it, that children who have strong oral language skills later become strong readers and writers. So when you're helping children to develop oral language skills, you're actually setting the foundation for them. And when I say "you," I'm looking at you, audience, you families who are here tonight. You're the ones who are with them. And they start with you at birth, and they're with you their whole lives. Not only are you the first teacher, you're the most important teacher in their world. So talk with them and listen with them. Even little babies, you know, sometimes it's hard when you see a little baby to say, to start talking to them, because they're not necessarily going to talk back to you. But if you watch a little one, they follow your eyes, they follow your expression, they start to mimic. And if you wait at a certain age, at about six, seven, eight months, that child is going to start forming words. You'll see their mouth actually moving and trying to mimic what you are saying. And then little sounds will come out of there. They are talking to you. They are expressing themselves. And as time goes on, with more talking and listening and exchanging, those early babbles become the first words, and they start uttering one word, and then two words, and then sentences. And they learn the rhythm of language, that first I talk, and then you talk. And while you're talking, I'm listening, and we go back and forth. Sometimes with young children, striking conversations can be difficult, but there's always something to talk about. A child picks up a banana and starts to eat. "Oh, you like bananas. I like bananas, too. I also like apples and oranges." And sometimes, depending on the age and who's in proximity, you might feel like people are going to think you're a little... Well, but you know what? It's most important to do that. There is nothing more important than that exchange. Talk about what you're doing. I kind of picture the color person on a football game saying, "And now this is happening, and now that's happening, and what did you think when that was happening?" Just keep talking. And probably most importantly, listen to your child. Later on, that foundation is going to help them, as Linda said, that those words have meaning, and that meaning can then be recorded. And once you record that, then you can read back from it. These are the most important skills that your child is going to have.
I want to ask Susan a naive question. Do boys and girls verbalize at different rates from each other? Obviously, there's a whole spectrum in each gender, but as a general rule, are girls more verbal than guys? I had two sons, and the first words I heard from them, which were repeated with great glee thereafter, were "Uh-oh." And that's usually when the bowl of Cheerios went on the floor.
I think that, listen, there are some things that are nature as opposed to nurture. But I think that we should be nurturing boys every bit as much as we do our girls when it comes to language development. A quick story. My youngest, who's now 22, used to travel back and forth to the childcare program where I was director. And in the car, we would do a lot of talking. And at the point at two and a half, when the word "actually" started coming out of his mouth, "Well, actually, Mom, this is what I was thinking." I'm like, "Actually?" And then I was talking to an adult, and the word "actually" was coming out of my mouth a lot. And I said, "He's hearing that." I think it depends on what we expose our children to, and we should never say, "This is just the way it is." I don't think we can accept that. And our boys need those skills.
Often in our classrooms, we'll see the girls gravitating towards the dramatic play area with the shopping lists, and the boys in the construction areas with the blocks. But what you can do at home or in the classroom is bring the other areas into their world. So bring the books about constructions and trucks and all those things that your little boys typically like, and bring the literacy to them, and get creative with it. And the same with the little girls, to get the building blocks and things, and using the blocks in place of food and that sort of thing.
Okay. And before we get to our last question, I want to encourage you again that your program is actually a resource of materials. So for those that might be listening in tonight and don't have a program, there are tips for parents on homework. There are 10 tips. Make sure your child has a quiet, well-lit place to do their homework. Make sure your child has all the paper, pencils, materials that they need. Help your child manage their time with homework. Be positive about homework. If they say it's hard, don't say it's hard. Be positive, say, "You can do it." When your child does a homework, you do homework. That's a great time for them to see you balancing your checkbook and other things. Make sure you provide guidance and answers when you can. Make sure you ask the teacher to play a role in the homework. What can I do to help my child? What is also meant to be done by the child should be done by the child, not you. So make sure you know the difference. Stay informed, talk with your teacher. And the 10th tip in our book is, help your child figure out what's the hard homework? What's the easy? And start with the hard. So 10 very easy tips about how you can help. And our last question that we'll get to tonight is, what are some specific expectations for each grade level, and how can parents help? And I'm going to ask Jennifer from our district to answer that question.
Okay. Parents are always eager to hear, "How can I help my child do better at school?" Because we all know that success in school often leads to success later in life. So in the early grades, I know Dr. Patton said we'd go grade by grade, and I know we're getting close on time, so I'm going to lump pre-K and K together. That's the time, as everyone has shared, for lots of listening on your part to encourage your student to talk. We also want to talk to our children about what we're doing. As you're cooking dinner, explain what you're doing, and use the vocabulary that is the actual names for things. Don't use baby talk with your children. Please talk to them just like adults. When children tell you things, ask them, "How do you know that?" And that really generates a lot of language. If they say to you, "That car's broken." Well, how do you know that? And they might tell you, "You know, because it doesn't run." Well, how did you try to get it to go? And just, instead of telling them things, ask them things to encourage them to speak more. Encourage them to touch objects and count them, so that they learn numbers and relationships. Are there more blocks in this pile or in this pile? How do you know that? And see if they really have counted them, or if they're just looking to see how many and guessing. In first and second grade, students really learn to read. And so having them practice with the sight words we talked about earlier is very important because it gives children confidence. When they see words they know on the page, they're so eager to keep reading, to look for the next word they know, and the next word they know. And when they come to a word they don't know, instead of just telling them the word, ask them, "What would make sense there?" Because lots of times, if they're paying attention and they're understanding what is being read, they'll make a good guess, and that guess might be right. You can go back later and say, "You know, here, you guessed that word was 'house.' Look at this word. It starts with H. That was exactly what that word said."
And our third grade up, I'm going to jump in for Jen, because we're on a clock here tonight. The third, fourth, fifth grade, you have some answers in your book. If you don't have a book with us here tonight, and you're watching virtually or down the road, click on our town hall meetings, and you'll find our resources or our Parent Academy. And in closing, I want to thank our panel, our two facilitators out in Amokalee and in Everglades. I want to mostly thank you that joined us here in one of our three sites, or joined us virtually. We're our very first ever virtual town hall meeting. Please join us again on February 12. We're going to do our second virtual meeting, and that will be on college and career readiness, talking about scholarships, a whole host of activities. Thank you so much. Our panelists will be here for a couple more minutes, so join them if you had a couple of follow-up questions.